This meeting, now order is really the first regular meeting with county council in 2021, January 28th, 2021, 4:00 PM. I'd like to welcome all the guests. I'd like to specially welcome my new councilman, Councilwoman Deirdre Stalkins. I think you're the first councilwoman that's ever come to Lexington, Dillon County in her career. And I'd like to welcome Jamal Campbell. You brought it to the youngest. I had him at the table. I'd also like to welcome Chris Miller, one of my friends in Lakeview, said he's a great fellow and had worked good as a county captain. I appreciate all y'all being here and taking part. We'll start off by saying our thanks to ladies.
Ladies and gentlemen, United States of America, to the people of which we stand here, one nation under God, in the middle of the world.
I'd like to call him, uh, even quite a, to say the implication.
That's by his most gracious ever asking fathers, once more again, we come to say thank you for your grace and mercy. We ask you to continue to bless us, Lord, bless this meeting, Lord, bless everything we do today, let every decision we make be for the betterment of Dillon County. Honestly, ask your Father's name, we pray, amen.
Carol, for you to watch me.
Next, if there's approval of agenda, we have a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion to second?
A second.
All in favor of approving the agenda, raise your right hand. Number four, approval of minutes, 10:28, 2020, 11:18, 2020, and 12:09, 2020. Requires the motion, we have a motion.
I make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, number second.
A second.
Have a motion, is it, number second, is it all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, number five, public comment, Mr. Ron Crawford, three minutes.
Need more than three minutes, but, uh, we'll get right to it. Well, citizenship and misdirection. I wasn't gonna bring that up because I got a call yesterday saying that the meeting wasn't in the paper. But to my surprise, when I was calling, they haven't changed. There it is. They're gonna change again today. But the main thing I want to talk about is the citizenship of administrator. Uh, are you a citizen of Dillon County?
I gotta play some living here, pardon.
So was, uh, Cliver.
Don't don't think about that.
You were right here.
Yeah.
You were right here when all this mess was going on. You got, they got really proud of him because they say he wasn't a citizen of Dillon County. But now he's not a citizen of Dillon County, doesn't murder a bee. But he got a two-year contract. He had three other people, he didn't even talk to them. Give him a two-year contract, but he's not a citizen. Now how's that? I'm asking a question. Because you say so, that's the way it works. Don't you know, you all work for us, just right here, might not like it, but you work for us. But you do everything possible. So Christian, oh, you Christian, that's what I'm, that's what pisses me off, excuse me. You don't spell Christ with a K, you spell it with a C. You don't like what I'm saying, you can meet me outside, I'll tell them out, you can talk to me later. But I'm telling you to your face, not behind your back. This is the most corrupt, that's what, Cliver was getting rid of corruption, he was finding out who was so corrupt. That's why you wanted him out of here. But he's a yes man. Yes, you are, I tell you to your face. If you take your nose out, that buck, you wouldn't even breathe.
My brother, too.
This what it's all about, buddy.
No, I don't believe it, no.
No, this is about, this is what my, my place, being on council, that's what this is all about.
I, I, you know, figure, I don't know, sorry, Mr. Ralph, I'm hard to hear and with that mask on, I really can't.
Well, I, I got COVID, this is a COVID time, we're gonna have them on. Everybody's gonna have them on.
I know that.
But y'all know what I'm talking about. And I got all this information after the election. As Mr. Drive, he brought this thing on, he gave me two-year contract. Now, if I'm lying, you can take me out by now.
Alan said the three minutes is up.
But you owe me three minutes from the last time. You owe me three minutes from the last time, you wouldn't hear me about the ditches and the trenches.
The three-minute time period is up.
That's why nothing gets done, because three minutes, what can a person do? If y'all sit behind the door and, and the floor is messed and nobody knows anything about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, well, number six, new business, Marlboro Electric Co-op Agreement Economic Development.
Mr. Chairman, this agreement's in the package here, it's, uh, this is an agreement we asked Marlboro Electric Co-op to, under their, um, Suckling Rule Development Act, um, they can give us funds to, uh, to fund economic development projects, which they outlined in I-95 mega site. They are willing to give us, um, $248,375 for, uh, economic development projects in the Carolina's I-95 mega site. And, uh, this is money we've received the last 15 years or more. I would recommend that we take requests from all of the last economic development.
Councilman, maybe just so you know, we can hear you, or at least I can.
But we can hardly hear him, what is back to us, who knows anybody else, understand what he said.
So how long they been providing this money, please?
Uh, far back as I can go, 2001, 2002, so it's been, maybe not every single year, you know, but just about every year, I mean, just, you know, a lot of years.
Any stipulation?
Not for these, not this year.
In the fact that I would read, uh, they, they're punishing the money, it's not caused to the county or anything.
Right, it's not caused to the county. It's focused this month.
Do we have a motion to approve this agreement?
I make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Okay. Motion to second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, um, number six, B, PD Electric Co-op Agreement Economic Development.
Mr. Chairman, this is the same, uh, funds coming from PD Electric Co-op, so Marlboro Electric. And, uh, it's in the same situation, uh, they're gonna give us for money to put into the I-95 mega site, uh, $66,625. It's the same, same, same agreement, basically, so it's coming from PD Electric, so Marlboro Electric.
This requires a motion, I don't know. Do we have a motion to second?
I see it.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, six, B, Marlboro Electric Corporation Memorandum of Understanding.
Mr. Chairman, we got handed this out, it may be sitting on your chair, but it's basically the same agreement that we provided to you. And if you take the two monies that you get, that you got from PD and Marlboro, it actually comes out about $315,000. Uh, this agreement here basically says that county, uh, can cooperate with, um, with economic development projects in the I-95 mega site. And they're saying that since we're looking at doing a, uh, potential economic development project on spec building, which they're currently building right now, basically these, only $285,000, we could apply toward their project, which they're gonna spend probably in excess of $15 million or more. So this is a small amount of money to provide, do that, we, we got it for other companies. This is an agreement that I basically had, we've looked at one time before, but I changed it, we got the language to basically.
We have a motion, we have a memorandum of understanding.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion, is it second?
A second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, new business, Industrial Park Road.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna let Mr. Al Berry, our county attorney, explain this part of it.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. The, uh, the road that's, uh, that we're talking about is the road by the new Equus, um, building, which is in front of Harbor Freight. And Equus, uh, you may remember, I think it's been about a year or a year and a half ago, we realigned the road and renamed it I-95 Logistics, uh, Road. And Equus is offering to do some work on the road for us at their expense, just to benefit as well, but at their expense, and this agreement that, uh, you should have gotten, um, provided to you, just, uh, allows them a temporary access and construction easement, so that they can go on the road and do the work needed at last, until the work is either done or for one year from the day we sign the agreement. If you do decide to agree to the, um, easement agreement, I would ask you to make it subject to Sandy Wattsburg's review. We have sent it to her and, uh, please tell you more about her credentials, she usually reviews our road issued, uh, through PD com, and she can tell you, she can, she's gonna let us know if she is okay with the road agreement as well, but she hasn't told us yet. So if you approve it today, I'd like it to be subject to her approval as well.
Yeah, that's fine. Now, I can just give you a little bit of update, if you go out there and drive on the road that's currently there now, and when you come in on 34, you can see when Equus built the brand-new building, the 370,000 square foot building, there's a part of the road where the road stops, you know, that's just the way it used to be. And what Equus wants to do is extend that pavement from that part, and then, of course, turn it into the back end, because they got trucks that come into the back of the building. So, um, Equus has agreed to pay the total cost, so all they, but they do need, they do, like Alan said, they do need agreement from us, letting them come on our property to extend that road. And Sandy Wapner, who works in PD Council Government, she's a professional engineer, who does all the C-Fund work. And I agree with Alan, I think, I think she's fine with it, but I would make, you know, make the motion that we approved the project, approved this agreement based on her, her checking off on it, which I don't think there's gonna be a problem.
Alan, if we approve this easement, would there be any liability at all to the county?
Uh, liability as far as what now?
Anything, if somebody get hurt out there, or anything that can come back to the county with this?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Anything that would put the county in any jeopardy far as, any type of liability, anything that could come back?
Right, well, as far as the construction matters, we wouldn't be responsible, I think they agree with deals with that. The road is our road anyway, so if it's something that would've, that we could be liable for just because it's our road, we're liable for it regardless. But as far as the construction and cost of construction, we're not responsible for any of that.
Yeah, you, you're right, you're going down the same path I was. They come on our, our easement, we wanna make sure, that's why Sandy Wapner, I want her to look at, to make sure they put in the right type of packing and, you know, road in there to make it line up with ours, so there's no dip or something, some issue like that. So I, I, and that what you, I mean, you were thinking the same things, okay? That part, that's why we want Sandy to look at, to make sure that, when the, you know how it is, when the end of the road is, we'll make sure that the road connects right back to their property, in a way, we're not gonna be having a problem, so I.
And it matches what else is there, and it also is capable of supporting traffic, and it is, it is planned for that, but we do want Sandy to look at it, but.
Right.
If we, if we make a motion to approve this, and you gonna write that in, I mean, who gonna notify the people and tell them, you know, what we're thinking about and what we're requiring?
Well, we're, we're requiring Sandy to review it first. If you approve it, it will be with her approval first.
Yeah.
If she comes back and wants something else in it, then we'll bring it back to you to review.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Okay, do we have a motion on the Industrial Park Road?
Make that motion.
Okay, we're gonna motion it a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Number seven now, old business, Dillon County Hazard Mitigation Plan Update.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we got a plan, I know, um, Mr. Moses Hayward, before he, uh, left, uh, was asked from Parents Office, Michelle and I have been through this proposal. What this does is, this, uh, Hazardous Mitigation Plan is $50,000 for the total to have AECom do it. Um, what it does is, it provides us a plan in case we have a disaster, um, a number of years ago, PD cog did this agreement for us, and they elected not to do it, you know, this time, so they asked AECom if they would come in to do it. And so what it does is, if, if we have a storm of any kind, you know, hurricane, tornado, any type of storm-related activity, we would follow, we would be under FEMA's guidelines to make sure that the people in Dillon County would get reimbursed from FEMA again. So, you know, I, I recommend that, you know, based on the work that Mr. Hayward did and Michelle's done down there, that, that we approve the $50,000. We got a 75% grant from the state, so our, our contribution would be 12,500 to get the whole plan done. So I think it's, uh, it seemed pretty reasonable to me, what they recommended.
When we pull in 12,500?
Uh, we would take 12,500 out of their, out of their budget for that. But it basically gets us into compliance, should there be a storm, you know, torn, you know, God forbid a tornado, hurricane, or something like that, FEMA requires us, and the state requires us to have a hazardous mitigation plan, which we didn't have one up until about 10 or 12 years ago. So we wanna, wanna make sure that should something ever happen, that, you know, the people in Dillon, people in citizens Dillon County could be under the FEMA umbrella.
I agree with the mitigation plan, it's in everybody's pocket, it looked real good to me, I was thinking something we really needed.
Yeah, I, I think AECom is good, I would recommend that you approve the proposal with AECom as the person did work.
Do we have a motion to approve the Hazardous Mitigation Plan Update?
Yeah, with AECom.
I make that motion, Chair.
Motion, number second?
Second.
Second, any more discussions? All in favor, put your right hand. Okay, uh, seven B, Dillon County Flood Management Study.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we got another, uh, actually, we received a grant about a year ago, under the, um, the feds, for $75,000 to do a, uh, flood management study for Dillon County. And we're gonna work with, of course, we'll work with the city of Dillon, Lakeview, and Loudoun, but it's basically with Dillon County. We got $75,000 grant from the feds, and we have applied for 25, the AECom and the grant, and the proposal we got here is for $100,000. But we've got $75,000 we already got from the feds. So the 25,000, we applied for the grant, we feel like we got a good opportunity to get the other 25,000, so it won't cost us anything to match. So this is a proposal that Mr. Hayward and him worked on before. Uh, I did talk to Kevin Crick, who's, what works with AECom is, um, I did talk with the city of Dillon, the city of Dillon is doing the same thing we did. We got a $75,000 grant, they got a 300 and, I don't know, 350,000 grant, something like that, 300 something thousand dollar grant. They, they teamed up with AECom. What I would like to do is, of course, agree with, you know, what they propose too, is that team up with city Dillon, uh, and, and tag this grant along with their grant. And the reason I say that is because if you look at the city of Dillon, you look at Lakeview and Loudoun, if you look at the city of Dillon, they can only study out to the city limits. Well, you and I, everybody knows that the water doesn't stop at city limits, it keeps on running down different streams, you know, different, different locations. So if the city of Dillon does this, and after my conversation with Glenn Wagner is, we would take what city of Dillon's doing, and then take what we propose as a county, and basically look at the whole streams all the way down to the county line, and that way, we can really.
How about, um, how about the town of Loudoun, town of Lakeview?
They're, they're gonna work.
Loudoun's got big problems, and when they had the floods, Lakeview had some problems. They gonna study that and give them.
Yeah, yeah.
Tell them what needs to be done.
Yeah, this proposal here, we'll go into Lakeview and Loudoun too, and talk with, and work with them on figuring out what their problems are. And really, as y'all know too, a lot of times, it's not, like you said, but it's not hit the town limits, a lot of times it's stopped up downstream, you know what I mean? But the problem is it backs up into the towns and backs up in certain areas, so if we can identify those areas, the way I think it's probably gonna end up, they're gonna, they're gonna want you to identify the areas throughout the county, and the areas that are backing up in flood areas, they wanna identify those. Then I think they could come back and give us additional funding if we do this stuff. So it's almost like if we do the study, then we got an opportunity to come back and say, okay, we've addressed it in the study, so therefore we, we identify this as a, as an area that needs to be addressed, and I think we can apply for additional grant money to get it done. So I think it's a.
That's the whole county.
Whole county, the whole thing. And I think, the rea, the good part about it is, the city of Dillon's got their own grant, and they approve their own project, but we're gonna team up with them anyway, you know what I mean, to make sure it's all one, they're gonna use AECom to do it too. So I think we, I think we.
The same company, same people doing it, the town of Dillon.
Yeah, Dillon, yeah.
Cliver, Loudoun, Lakeview, under that same umbrella, though, we're talking about the county and the city of Dillon.
Right.
And we're talking about doing everything for the whole county.
Yeah.
But does it, does, but those representatives from Lakeview and Loudoun know about what we're doing here?
Yeah, yeah, they, they had to actually sign a letter.
We certainly don't want everything up here, definitely, we don't want it down there, we don't want it up out.
I totally, totally agree, totally, totally agree with what you're trying to say, that Lakeview, Loudoun, Lakeview, Loudoun, Dillon both have to sign a letter.
Right.
An agreement to this grant.
Right.
That they know, they know all about it. And I talked to Matthew a little bit about it too, the mayor down there, and I think that Jared, I talked.
We're gonna make sure we, everybody's on the same page.
I, I totally agree with you, I think, because, and everybody knows, the streams come all the way through, you know what I mean? So they, you know, they may go through towns and stuff, but you know, at the end of the day, they come all the way through and get into the little Peedy River, the Peedy River, and different other streams that way. So I think it's, uh, I think it's a good program, I really think it, I really think it gives some thought, good feedback.
Okay, um, we have a motion to do the flood management study.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Number eight, um, financial.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pitch it for all my staff, and Alan totally, but anyway, I'm gonna pitch it today for my staff. Um, I, I got, ran a copy of the budget, I just put it out for you, take a look at it. Uh, and we'll try to call a, a budget committee, Finance Administrator Committee meeting probably next week or so, and give us a midterm approach of where we at financially for the year. After just looking through it, it looks, everything looks pretty much in line for this year, through the fifth, through half the year, we've been basically halfway through the year. Um, a couple of things I, you know, that I track every year is I, I look at the, uh, what we're bringing in, solid, I mean, you know, from solid waste, of course, but we also look at, uh, tax we bring in for, sales tax and stuff like that, things that are associated with the economy. And so far, this year, it looks like we're on track of what we projected so far. So, uh, I feel pretty good. I, I was a little bit concerned about, and the economy kind of slowed down a little bit, shut down a little bit, that people were buying, but it appears that the state is collecting the sales tax, even though people are buying stuff online, it still appears that, that the state is collecting those funds. So I was a little bit nervous about that, but I feel better about that, and I talked with the treasurer, and, and, you know, we feel pretty confident in that. Uh, current taxes look good, vehicle taxes look good, uh, departments all looking, look like they're in pretty good shape so far for the year. I think if we get the new trucks that we ordered months ago at, at, at landfill, I think that'll help solve a lot of that issues on, on getting stuff fixed. But, uh, everything else looks good in Fund 20, which is our, our, um, our debt service fund, and then Account 49, and the rest of them are pretty much in shape for this year.
What's the amount in our reserve account, honey?
We've got about, we've got about two and a half billion dollars right now, you know, only, you know, based on, you know, because this time of the year, we have a little bit more, you know, a little bit more, because taxes came in, you know what I mean, but, uh.
Yeah, that's our reserve?
Yeah, yeah, we got about two million in reserve at this point, normally, but that, that's not, you know, that, that, that'll be, we still got six more months, five or six more months to run out.
Is it general fund or reserves?
In reserves. So we're running pretty low, we're running about a million and a half to, you know, something like that, maybe a million and a half. That's just because we're collecting taxes so far this year. So that, 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 that may go down this time, that's all.
Any council members, any more questions, or like, Clay, or ask Clay before we move on to finance? Okay, well, there's a number nine, county administrators report.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just got two or three things to cover, excuse me. Um, the, uh, Dillon County Dirt Road, the Rocket Program, we're working with the C-Fund Committee, uh, we've got seven roads we've already done, took C-Funds, Steve, are they holding up? We got Steve in here, who's mine.
Yeah, they hold up pretty good.
So the way we rocked them this past time is, is they look pretty good.
They have a lot of maintenance on it.
A lot of maintenance, we got seven of them done. Uh, the C-Fund Committee's meeting in February, uh, is, is my understanding that they're gonna take up at least seven more, and then I think they're gonna probably identify seven more, so I think they're looking at either 14 roads, they can look at 14 roads in February, um, those funds are already been set aside for those 14 roads. And then I think the C-Fund Committee in February is also gonna look at seeing what they can do in addition, in addition to that, so.
I'd like, I'd like to ask, uh.
Yeah.
The Public Works Committee to try to meet with the C-Fund Committee.
Okay.
And we get on the same page and see how they really.
Yep.
Kick out these roads and stuff, since they can, and they pretty well say, we know what the worst roads are.
Right.
And, uh, if they, if they can meet together, I think that would be real good.
Yeah, yeah, because they meet on the, usually they meet on the second Thursday of the month here at this office here, at this table here, so I think that'd be, I think it'd be well worth it.
Chairman of Public Works can align that up and contact the committee.
I will, I will, I'll work with the chairman of the committee.
I was gonna say something else, um, since it's been on these roads. I've been, uh, talking and working with the sheriff the past couple of weeks.
Right.
And, uh, I think he's getting up a crew, all, you, your roadway trash that people's been throwing out, um, I think he's gonna get up a crew and, and try to get, get that going out there, and I think we gonna try to, we could, me and him, me and the sheriff were talking to Clay the other day, I thought we gonna try to get up the county itself, this side of it, get up a crew too, where you can have a couple crews around the county, start picking up some trash, try to help the problem out. And, um, just, everybody's gotta help it out, but not throwing it out too. But, uh, we are getting, the sheriff's gonna have a crew, and then hopefully the county can have a crew, you have two crews out there, and, and.
That should help.
I, I, I started a new committee this time.
Right.
And I put Deirdre Stalkins, chairwoman, over the committee.
Okay.
And Jamal Campbell on that committee, because those two, when they were running, did more than cleaned up Dillon County, they need a council.
Sure did.
And pass it done, and I feel like we can get some grants, some power matter fraud, get some help, buy bags and that kind of stuff. And I know you can hit it up and do a good job, because I've seen what you've done here. Jamal, you too, and I appreciate what you've done, but we can work with you. Y'all, you the chairman, call, call Doug, and work ourselves, put a word together.
Okay.
If you find out who's doing it, you wrap the deed, that way you have to.
I think so. Um, I know, another thing is, uh, Dillon County broadband, uh, I did talk to the state about it, and then talked to some other, other counties around the PD region. Uh, there is some federal money, but they're still coming down through the feds, so we're gonna try to see what we can do to, to go after those funds. I do know there's some, some different companies out there provide, I guess, sound waves for the, for the, for some of that, some of it works, some of it doesn't work.
Yeah, I've got something to reference that, so we can put it on record, so everybody knows.
Okay.
With the rural internet, it's a problem.
Yeah.
Um, the kids are, due to the pandemic, they can't do their schoolwork.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's important that they have adequate rural bank, um, internet in rural areas, because it is a problem. We need to tap into all resources, whatever the county need to do.
Right.
We need to acquire other calls, and we need to see how we can go ahead and expedite that, because it is a problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Kids need to be able to do their work, I mean, getting those calls for a while now, so we need to really look at it, not just talk about it.
No, I totally agree.
Where I'm seeing in the federal for a local county, I was supposed to get, I forgot, ain't many, hundred thousand dollars for it. Who, who's in control of that, who tells them where to put it, or is it gonna get all rural areas? Who tells them where to put it or is it gonna get all rural areas?
I know the officer regulatory, you know, part of, part of State South Lines got their, they got, I mean, they're, they're the agency handling that.
Yes, I've been talking to Mr. Tom Buthay back there, we've been trying to, networking on some things, trying to find some contacts, working real hard to get this done, because this is a problem.
Yep.
We got to meet on halfway, we really got to find out what we need to do, we just can't talk.
So, if you'd like to, if you'd like to comment, she's welcome to.
What I wouldn't mind is that.
Yes, sir.
I, I won't take up much of your time, but I'm gonna come over here. Because I, I'm like Councilman McLeod, it's really, I just, we just can't operate without it anymore. Mr. Chairman, can I take this on? My wife says I'm mumble and I want you to hear, so I'm gonna take this on.
I have a problem here and the best, basically, everybody's heard it, but I knew it was weird.
You might have introduced yourself.
I'm Tom Buthay, I live out on Highway thirty four in Dillon and I'm retired about two, three years ago. I've lived out in the country since nineteen seventy eight. And I've been looking for good, good internet for four or five years.
Okay.
And I have not found it yet. And I have tried every different way to do it. Councilman McLeod and I have been talking, I guess, about three years about this. He came to my house when he was running for reelection and he was one of the first people that ever, that's run in my district that came to see me. So I appreciated that, so when we're having problems with internet, I said, you know, that, and everybody else must be too. So we started talking back and forth and he's been, Councilman McLeod needs to be committed because he's been very attentive. He has a real concern for rural, high-speed internet in Dillon County. As he mentioned, with the pandemic has brought everything out. The school district has tried things, but it's been, and they've done the best they could, but it's been kind of a patchwork. I've tried satellite, I've tried all kinds of stuff, right now I'm using a hotspot. I have to hook it up to my telephone and it's, if you've ever tried to download a movie on that, you can't do it, unless you got two or three hours. But the schools are what I'm worried about, I mean, my wife and I, lifelong residents of Dillon County and we don't plan on going anywhere and it's just hurting students. My wife's a retired school teacher and we, we talk about it a lot. The thing I kind of compare it to, how many of you used the outhouse and pumped water from a pitcher pump? Okay, I have two. Can you remember the excitement when the electric co-ops came through in the thirties and forties? They kind of took us out of the dark ages. Well, to me, that's kind of the same thing. We're still in the outhouse age and we still in the pitcher pump stage and we need some help. And the reason the co-ops came about is because, well, the regular power companies wouldn't do it, Carolina Power and Light, they would not do it, but anyway, that's what we did. If I'm taking up too much time, Mr. Chairman, you just hit that gap, because I, I've been thinking about this a long time and like I said, I've been talking to councilmen for a long time. Another thing too, because, and everybody realizes this, more and more services are going online, telemedicine, banking, I mean, that's the way it's going. If you don't have high-speed internet, you just won't.
That's right.
I have a son that lives in, right outside of Atlanta, Georgia, lives in Peachtree City and by the way, he's a graduate of Dillon High School. My wife had an accident, we went to see him back last fall and she, it was craziest thing, she just, she had a fall. We did it all over the internet. We went online to the local doctor and we did it all over the internet, so I mean, and more and more companies are gonna be looking at it because of the cost. She would've gone into a doctor's office, it'd been a hundred dollars, I don't know what it cost over the internet, but it's probably thirty, thirty-five dollars. So that's the kind of thing we're looking at. And then I mentioned Netflix and every, just, all, all, it's like, most of the stuff is going that way, because it's easy to use and it costs less for business to do it that way. Now during my research for the last three years, I've, I've kind of noted some things going on. Up in Robson County, Columbia Electric Co-op ran five RPK, they got some money from somewhere. Maybe it's from the rural, maybe it's from the rural co-op people in Washington. Just recently, up in Fayetteville, up in Cumberland County, Fayetteville's the county seat, there's a company from Indiana coming in, they're gonna put it all over Cumberland County. And then I read an article not too long ago, where a rural electric co-op out in Oklahoma, sound a little bit like Dillon County, they put, they rented space on power poles for high-speed rural internet. So those are the kind of things that are going on. And also Marion County, I understand, is working with HTC. So, and that's, yeah, so that's, it's going on here. I read recently too, Congressman Clyburn is really looking out for his constituents. He's getting high-speed rural internet for Orangeburg, Dorchester County, because he's about the second most powerful man in Congress right now. So, you know, maybe if we could contact him.
Yeah.
The incoming chair, the incoming chair of the House Agriculture Committee in Washington is from Georgia and he's made it a priority. Maybe we can contact him. And of course, Governor McMaster says it's a priority with him too. But my request to, to, to county council and Dillon County would be to, let's treat it like you were prospecting for a Fortune five hundred industry. Now, it may be a long slog and it may require much persistence and there are a lot of other counties in the, in the same fix we are, and they're gonna be competing for the same hot of money, but we, we just got to go see what we can do, because it's long-term, if we don't get up to speed with some of these other people, it's gonna hurt the county. County council and Administrator Young have done a great job in bringing new industry to the county, so we know how to do it. We know how to do it. Now, one ace in the hole is our state representative, Jackie Hayes, is on the House Ways and Means Committee. That is one of the most powerful committees in Columbia. Those are the people that create the money bills. They gave, they got their hands on the money. And goodness gracious, if nobody could help us, maybe he could. But I mean, it, it, you know, so, and also Congressman Rice has secured money for internet for Ori County and Rodney Berry's on his staff and Rodney's from Dillon County and maybe he could help us. But like I said, it's, it's, it's not gonna be easy thing, but it's something we gotta do too. So, I mean, that's maybe more than what y'all want to hear, but those are just some thoughts I had going through my mind, I'm just really concerned that we don't have it, we need.
And we're gonna stay on top of it and work on it, we as two and I agree with everything you say, I really do. And gee, I'd like you to work with Clay and stay, stay on top of it. Clay's got so much to do with it, we gotta push it, we gotta, we gotta go with it. But I think if we get in touch with Marlboro Co-op and PD.
Yep.
They pretty well cover everything, maybe we can.
Yeah, I covered it.
Anyway, if they can't do it, maybe somebody else can now. Maybe HTC can come in, I don't know. But I, again, I want to come in, Councilman McLeod, because he's, he's been calling me and I've been texting him, I mean, we've been going back and forth for a while.
That's good.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I just got a couple more. First thing is, is the Dellic County committees were put together and just appear here and of course, there were a number of committees here, everybody got a copy of that and, and just wanted to also note that there's some things that committees have been kind of tasked with to look at and of course, these are just, you know, trust me, there'll be a lot more stuff added to the different committees as we go through it, you know what I mean? But here's kind of a breakdown of what was.
Well, the last eight years, the committees, since I've been here, has really, I mean, all that I give, we can be acting, the committees, they represent, they're decent and stuff, they know what needs to be done and we can all work together to see if we can get it done.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've always kind of, in the past, always kind of used the committees as much as I could, because I think, I think it'd be a big finish. Two other quick things I have, just, I asked the PD council governors to see if they'll come in and do a CIP plan for its capital improvement plan at no cost to the county, which they've agreed to do. So I mean, you know, I may, I may have PD Coi come in and help us, it's Lindsay Prevent and her crowd with PD council governments, they'll help us come in, identify that part, it didn't cost us any money. And I did find out the other day, at the county administrative meeting, each county in the, in the PD region is gonna get about two hundred thousand dollars for COVID relief and some other stuff, so I may be meeting one of the committees to go over, there's some guidelines associated with that two hundred thousand dollars. I talked with Florence and Marion and Darlington the other day and we're all kind of looking at the same thing, so I'll probably get one of the committees to look at that and see what we can do. There's two hundred thousand dollars out there, we gotta apply for it between now and March first, so we may, we'll probably, I'll probably get with one of the committees probably next week or so to say, hey, let's go ahead and proceed this two hundred thousand dollars. So all six counties kind of agreed to split the funds up between each other, so I think my other sister counties are helping.
If we're able to get those two hundred, that two hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna put it in the general fund or operating fund?
It will, it will be outlined for what we call COVID, COVID-type project, you know what I mean, that we just outline in the grant and say, the grant will basically say these monies can be used for, you know, X, Y, Z, you know what I mean? And then we'll figure out what we, how we want to spend the two hundred thousand dollars based on that. That's all I got.
You had any thoughts in the workshop, we were trying to get together?
Yeah, Alan, you wanna make a, Alan, Alan wanted to make a comment too about that.
Yeah, just, just kind of under the administrative report, the, we're, we're trying to get together a workshop that's geared, I guess, more specifically for the newer members about meeting requirements and how executive sessions were, the rules for conducting meetings. I, I want to also ask the council during that workshop to approve some new rules. We, we really don't operate under all the rules or although we use it, but that's really never been officially voted on. And to go over a few things like that, so everybody kind of has an understanding of how those things work. If you have additional topics you'd like for us to cover, if you'd let me know, let me and Clay know, we can try to cover that. But I really would like to have that workshop in the next, within the next couple of weeks for the February meeting, if everybody can let us know when a good time might be for then.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, what I'll do is I'll follow up with Lisa Miller and I'll follow up with all the councils, see when this committee, y'all, whatever time we agree to, we'll, we'll have that meeting.
Okay, we're down here, number ten, ordinance reading. First reading and ordinance authorizing execution in lieu of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by between Dillon County, South Carolina and the company, a company known to the county at time, a project chariot with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including provisions of certain special source credits, authorizing the conveyance of certain lands owned by the county to project chariot and other matters related to their.
Alan, you want to say something or you, this, this economic development project we've been working on for probably close to a year or more and we finally got it down to a point where we think we can offer them a fee in lieu of tax agreement on this too and that part there too, so it's, probably discuss executive session too.
Anybody got any questions about this or that, Alan, raise your flag. We have a motion to approve the ordinance reading.
Make the motion.
We have a motion to execute.
I say it.
In second, any more discussion? Only favor of the right hand. Okay, we have a resolution. A res, a resolution authorizing execution in lieu of an inducement agreement and village rate agreement by and between Dillon County, South Carolina and a project chariot whereby under certain conditions Dillon County will execute a fee in lieu of tax and special source credit agreement with respect to a project in the county whereby by the project will be subject to payments of certain fees in lieu of taxes and Dillon County will make available certain credits against fee payments and reimbursement of investments in related qualified infrastructure and providing for related matters.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's the same project, it's just our economic development attorneys require us to do a resolution and a fee in lieu. Just, just for follow-up to Marion County, Allen and Marlboro County have passed the same orders we're passing, because the project is located in Tri Candy Park.
If they got any other questions, please.
Yes. What is project chariot? It's a project we're looking at, it's the Tri Candy Park, it's out there, some buildings are already there, we can basically work out that.
So that's what the building's called, project chariot?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we're trying to make a agreement with somebody that owns a red ticket.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. Well, they use a name like that, it's not really the name of the company.
Till somebody gets.
Till they make an announcement.
Till they get a statement.
Yeah, till they make an announcement, they give us a project.
If they have a, a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion to execute.
I'll say it.
In second, any more discussion? Only favor of the right hand. Okay, we have another twelve now, appointment accommodation board.
Mr. Chairman, we, we got two, I know the state council is making decisions tonight, but we do have two appointments to the accommodations tax, County, Dillon County Accommodations Tax Board, that's a committee that puts together that, that, that makes a recommendation as to us, how to spend the accommodation tax we receive from the state. We have two appointments and it's my understanding that the two appointments are not, some of the appointments are, are sensitive to, to, to the, to the hospitality industry. I'm not sure if these two appointments apply for that, but I do want to notify you and I'll get Ms. Miller to send out, you know, who's on the, well, who's on the committee here, but we got two appointments that are vacant and we need to fill by the next council meeting.
Is this something the council, there is?
Yeah, the council actually appointed, yeah.
The council districts, or?
No.
The district law and everybody but.
Yeah, it would be, you know, so, as you remember, some of the coun, some of the people on this committee have to fall under, like Mike Griffey falls under, you know, under accommodations, because of hotel, because he also, you know, bed breakfast, and some members have to actually fall under, you know, certain categories, but then some members are out large and I think, I think these two members are out large.
It's kind of hard for us to appoint somebody until we, all of us are on the same level and know exactly what we're talking about and we look around, because I, in case somebody is spurring them up, which you don't know yet, you gotta talk to the person, see if they want to be on the committee before you.
Mr. Chairman, I agree totally with you. That's why I wanted to kind of notify the council, give you, give you plenty of time to be thinking of different people that may have been serving on this committee and I'll send you out.
He said we'll go on next month. He said next month.
We'll take it up next month, that's fine.
Okay. Well, if I can, if we can, if we can, if we can kind of look into this twenty-nine next month and kind of figure out what we need to do and get somebody in mind or. Okay, now, we have number thirteen, executive session, requires a motion, we have a motion to go into executive session.
I make that motion, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion to execute. Second, any discussion? Only favor of the executive session, raise your right hand. Everybody that's here can come back after the executive session, we want to take no eye on the executive session, you know, we can come back.